Good afternoon, councilors. Welcome to the April 28th Oklahoma City Planning Commission meeting. If you have cell phones, other similar devices, if you would silence those or turn them off, we would appreciate it. If you are not the applicant and you want to address us on a case today, there are signup sheets like this, they're on the table outside of the chamber doors there, and we would be happy to hear you when we hear the case that you're interested in. And with that, we will go to acceptance of the minutes of April 14th. New term of art. Are we approving them still?
Yeah.
Oh, okay. Darn. I was looking for something new. We have a motion and a second to approve the April 14th minutes. Cast your votes, and they are approved.
Okay, we have nine continuance requests. Item A, and I'll read those, for item B-18 for case C-6808, defer that to May 12th. Item B-19 for case S-P-U-D-888, defer that to May 12th. Item B-20 for case P-U-D-1612, defer that to May 26th. Item B-21 in Bricktown to defer to May 26th. Item B-22 for P-U-D-1599, defer indefinitely. Item B-23 for case PC-10431, defer indefinitely. Item B-24 for case C-6756, defer indefinitely. Item B-25, case PC-10437, to withdraw. And item B-26 for case C-6809, to withdraw.
Anyone here today who wanted to address us on any of those items, 18 through 26, on our agenda?
Move approval of the uncontested requests.
Second a motion.
We have a motion and a second to approve the uncontested continuances. Cast your votes, and that's approved.
We've also received three new requests for continuance for case B-7, which is S-P-U-D-887, to defer that to May 12th. Item B-13 for case C-6811, to defer to May 12th. And item B-16, the de-annexation, to defer to June 23rd.
Did anyone come to address us on item 7, 13, or 16 today?
Move approval of new requests.
Second a motion.
We have a motion and a second to approve the additional continuances. Cast your votes, and that's approved. Are there any continuance requests from the public today? If not, we'll go to the consent docket.
Okay, there are five items on consent. Item one is A-B-C-852. Item two is C-6812. Item three is case C-6813. Item four is case C-6814. And item five is case C-6815.
Anyone today want to address us on items 1 through 5 on our agenda? Take a motion? Commissioners? The motion is second to approve the additional, or the uncontested, what am I saying? The consent docket, pardon me. Cast your votes, and that's approved.
Item six, under items requiring separate vote, is case S-P-U-D-882, to rezone 540 Southeast 82nd Street, from S-P-U-D-548 to S-P-U-D-882.
Is the applicant here? Come forward, please. Give us your name and address, and tell us what it is you want to do, please.
My name is Ricky Jackson, 3007 Kensington Place, Shawnee, Oklahoma. I'm representing Arrow Components, just wanting to add additional warehouses.
Commissioners, no one signed up?
I have a comment on the materials on this application, but first question is, have you read the technical evaluations, and do you agree with them?
The owner has yes.
Okay. But there was no TE relating to non-accessory signs. And I'd like to add that there will be no non-accessory signs in this application.
Okay.
And with that addition, I move approval.
Second a motion. Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve item six, adding a TE that there will be no non-accessory signs. Cast your votes, and that's approved. Thank you.
Thank you.
Item seven was continued. Item eight is S-P-U-D-890, to rezone 130 Broadway Extension, from R1 to S-P-U-D-890.
Good afternoon, Tim Johnson and Johnson Associates, here on behalf of the applicant. This is a S-P-U-D to allow for the tract, as highlighted, to be zoned to O2. What you don't see on that map is immediately southwest of that is the office building. This is all O2. This is getting ready to develop. Just south of there is an HBI hospital that just recently has been completed. These hospital owners are the same people that are going to develop a different medical facility on this site. And because this is an old-platted area, that not all the right-of-ways have been vacated or utilized, Oklahoma is a public street that's been paved and improved. They'll be extending that for their public access. They are working with these two property owners to gain a second private drive that will be shared with offices along the Frontier Road. So with that, we agree with the staff's comments, and ask for your approval.
Commissioners, no one signed up? Any discussion?
I had a couple of things I wanted to ask about. You know, we had a lot of back-and-forth about the signage on the hospital south of this at the Board of Adjustment, and so I, first of all, I think we ought to do a specific plan approval for this project, and then we can settle all that stuff here.
We're okay with that.
Okay. Well, then, I'm fine.
And we did realize that the sign became a big issue, so we've already met with their architect on this one, and made sure that his sign plans meet the criteria.
Right.
Tim, let me say thank you for that additional, I guess, helps us to understand how access to that particular facility is going to happen. And I know that with everything, the development that's happening in that area, that detention may be necessary at some point, and so we've already addressed that.
Yes, sir.
So I appreciate it. And all of that, Janice, I think what you're mentioning will be met in the site plan that will come back to us, is that correct? Okay. Move for adoption.
We have a motion and a second to approve item eight, and there will be a site plan. Cast your votes. That's approved.
Item nine is S-P-U-D-891, to rezone 1235 Northwest 38th Street, from R1 to S-P-U-D-891.
Tim Johnson, again, on behalf of the applicant. Mr. Jason Little is also here today. This has been a case that, because of the early submittal deadline, has given us a lot of opportunities to meet with a lot of people. And we've met with Janice, and Mr. Little has met and spoke to several of you. And the applicant has knocked on every door up and down 38th Street, and met with 11 out of 13 people, met with several neighborhood associations, some as late as Tuesday of this week. And we've tried to address all the concerns of the various property owners. This is an existing building that is not on the historic record, it's not listed, and not in a historic district. However, it is very important to the applicant that this building be able to be renovated, and be a major part of a boutique hotel that he's proposed on the site. There'll be a new building added to the north and to the east. There'll be a total of 32 rooms. It's anticipated that all the parking for the users of the hotel will be valet parked. The site is very tight, as you know, and the intent is to allow us to develop as many parking spaces as we can on the site. He has discussed with all the property owners up and down Claussen about shared parking and utilizing other parking areas, and has the ability to secure that. And we've written the language into the PUD that that'll all be secured before a CO is issued. We have also had some conversations with our traffic commissioner, Mr. Littlefield, with regard to this site, and as a result of some conversations with him, as well as with the Public Works staff and the Parks staff, we have looked, we're looking at a opening in this median that's maintained by the Parks Department. We think we can place this median in here without removing any trees. It would provide an access point. Most of the traffic will come to the site from Claussen, provide an access point directly into the parking, and allow exit to be out on Claussen here. The neighbors that had met about this, I was not at that meeting, but they were okay with that. In fact, they were supportive of that. This also helps the neighborhood, gives them the ability to turn around without having to go across Claussen, turn around legally. So we have proposed that. We've also, as you can see on this, we've proposed some additional parking that would be in the very expansive right-of-way that exists on 38th Street. That has been added to the PUD as well, that we're going to attempt to do that. However, it's part of a revocable permit process that'll have to be approved by Public Works and Utilities Department. We understand that we will have to do a PD plan for this median opening, but it does not have to go to Traffic Commissioner. Traffic staff is okay with it, Parks Department is okay with it, and so we commit to putting that in as part of this project. There were a few other changes that we've made to the document kind of in the last few days, and just for the record, I wanted to make sure I cover everything. We did include the office use in this S-P-U-D, but it'll be in conjunction with the owners of the facility, using it as an office for the facility.
So it'd be an accessory use?
It is going to be specifically worded that those office uses in conjunction with the hotel use, with the owners and affiliated entities' management operation. So we've included a few, like small café, pharmacy, sandwich shop, small retail, relative to the, and accessory to, the hotel, just clarified a few of those. I've already talked about the parking as part of a revocable. The signage, we're going to do a specific site plan on this project as well, and we'll address the specifics about the signage. We don't want a big sign or a giant monument sign, we want to do something tasteful on the building, something that's got a little historic look to it, and so we'll bring some details when we come with the specific site plan for that. And I think last, the, we've tied down in the document that the parking will have to be all finalized, whether onsite or offsite, at the time of the certificate of occupancy. And with that, I think I covered everything. We've looked at the traffic on 38th Street. The average daily traffic does not exceed 500 cars per day. At peak hours, we're talking five or six cars, so it's a very low traveled, and I think with this median opening, we'll be able to keep that traffic to the west end. Commissioner Powers, unless I missed something, I think I'm ready to answer any questions.
So we have incorporated the language then about the parking on the side and the median cut, and all of that as being intended, and we'll follow that through?
Yes.
And we'll look at it again when we get to specific plan?
Correct.
Okay. This project has been really an interesting one to work on. It struck me, you know, it's not totally dissimilar from the renovation and salvation of the Art Deco structure that's kind of tucked behind Bruno's there on 37th Street. It was just, you know, falling down, falling into ruin over years, and really, literally decades. And the way they were able to pay for what it took to save that building was to build those additional residential structures. When I met with the applicant, which was very early on, my initial question was, well, why can't we do that here, you know, make this into a really super-high-end residential development? But the truth is that the amount of money that it's going to take to save this building just does not make that possible. It's just, the numbers just don't work, it's just not cost-effective. So in order to keep this building, which everybody, you know, wants to do, we have to kind of give it a future, and I think this is kind of an ideal one, frankly. The applicant has met with, you know, everybody and consulted with everybody, he's been very open, and he's actually listened to what people have told him about, you know, their concerns, and, you know, how they want to see this thing develop, and what they don't want to see. The things that drove my very initial consideration, and are still driving it right this minute, are that, you know, I'm not interested in giving anybody the ability to bulldoze what's there and build a 32-room hotel. That's not the point of this project. It is completely to, you know, save this structure, and to give it a future, give it a life that's going to make it viable. But because of the enormity of the undertaking, I wanted to be sure that if for any reason, you know, God forbid, that turns out not to be a doable deal, that this is going to have to come back to us, that we're going to have, that it's drawn tightly enough, that it really is a description of this project, so that if this idea doesn't work, we're going to get to see what the next idea is. I really have every confidence that it will. I think it's a wonderful project, I think they've done everything right as far as reaching out to the neighbors and the neighborhoods, and their commissioners here, and traffic, and staff, and so. Is there anybody who's signed up to speak on behalf of this matter?
No one signed up, and I agree with everything you said. It's a great adaptive reuse of a very prominent structure, which I'd hate to see us lose.
It really, it would really be a shame.
Let me weigh in on what, Janice, you were saying about the coming back if this doesn't work. I think at our meeting when we talked about this with the applicant, this building isn't zoned properly anyway.
Right.
You know, the base zoning doesn't fit with what's in the building, and the likelihood, if this doesn't work, you're going to have a commercial office building. I mean, that's consistent with what goes on in Claussen. With this application, and with this use of that building, that anybody that's gone up and down Claussen says, what's in that? I've been in a lot, because a friend of mine has his art gallery in there, and we look around and think, well, what can be done with this? Well, your guy, and with your help, I think nailed it. I think this is a great, great use for that building, and I wish you the best of luck. But I have one question about the median, the cut-through. Have you also asked for angled parking in a portion of that median?
No. That was part of our original thought, where we'd have some on-street parking in the public right-of-way, but after talking to Traffic Commissioner Littlefield, he suggested that we reverse that, which is what we have done.
Oh, on the other side?
And put it on the property owner's side, with a revocable permit here.
Yeah, yeah, okay. All right.
And that'll provide him the control of that parking as well.
Yeah. Well, did you move? I'll second.
I will move for approval of project.
We have first, the second, and the motion to approve item nine. Cast your votes, and it's approved.
Thank you.
Item 10, S-P-U-D-1602, to rezone 11928 Traveler's Place, from R8, C4, and AA, to P-U-D-1602.
Mr. Chairman, members of the commission, my name is Dennis Box. Mr. Percival is here with me today. This is his property, he owns it. In fact, 30 years ago, he purchased, he had even more, he's developed the truck stop that you see on the very north portion of the site, a hotel, and some other uses. What we would like to do is have you all approve a PUD that would allow for an extension of a plethora of uses that we see out in the area. If you look at the map I've handed out, and I'll wait until Ms. Powers and Mr. Hensley get it, but on the first page, what you see is a Google map showing the area that we're dealing with. And on the south portion, you've got warehouses that Dick Tannenbaum built. Across the highway, you've got Frontier City, but all around, you've got multiple restaurants, you've got multiple industrial sites, warehouses, trucking companies, plumbing supply companies, you've got several hotels, you've got a mobile home park. So our challenge when we came up with this site and met with the staff was, well, then let's come up with a PUD that will provide for access to all the sites, it don't have to be on an approved street, that was the first driving course, and will allow for the continuation of the multitude of uses. When you look at the second and third page of the handout I gave you, what you see on the second page is that note that says Traveler's Place, that will be our access point to all of Track 1. That's why I wanted you to see that. With regard to 122nd Street, it'll have its own independent access. The third page is a series of warehouses that are referred to that Dick Tannenbaum had, has developed. So as you can tell, it's an intensely industrial and commercial area, and that's the uses that we've had. Two things happened. This was continued 60 days ago, and if you recall, we continued to thinking that we had an additional parcel that we needed to add. As it turns out, all the property that we own was a part of the original PUD, so we didn't add anything. But the member, several members of this commission asked that we take some uses out, which we have done, and the uses that we have in there, we think reflect all the uses that surround this site, both on the east side and the west side of I-35. The staff recommends approval. The staff does, however, have some technical evaluations that I'd like to discuss with you, if I could. We're okay with TE 1 and TE 2. With regard to TE 3 and 4 that deal with signs, I think it's important for you all to note that we've limited all our signage to 12-foot monument signs, except for one 20-foot sign on Track 2. And so we think that's appropriate, and I know this is standard language on the 8-foot signs, but we do have a sign package that we think is responsive to what's out there, be much more restrictive than what you see on all the other sites. We cannot agree to 5, although we will come back before you all with site plan approval. And so with site plan approval, we'll work with your staff, and if there's additional landscaping that needs to be on the south and east portion of Track 2, you'll be able to deal with us there, and we'll have the specifics. Facade regulations, the reason I wanted you to see the Tannenbaum warehouses, they're very nice, very attractive. All around there, you see anything from metal to tilt-up concrete to brick. We don't think that the 70% requirement, which is another standard you see, reflects the area or is appropriate, so we could not agree to that. We're okay with 7. The only place we have electronic display, which is number 8, is on Track 2. And our thought is, you know, if you had a Sonic or something like that, they're going to want electronic display. They have it all over. So we think it's appropriate, and we have limited it to Track 2, and we think it's an appropriate thing. 9 is okay. So to summarize, we are not okay with 3 and 4, 5, 6, or 8. And we're here to answer any questions, if you have any.
Dennis?
Yes.
Let's kind of go through a couple of them.
Yes.
With respect to number 5, you want to come back and show us a landscape plan?
When we come for site plan approval, yes, sir.
Would you agree not to knock all those trees down until we have a chance to look at the, I'm talking about the 75-foot barrier, I'm not talking about all the trees, but, I mean, until we've got something you're going to approve?
Mr. Chairman, we're agreeable with that.
Thank you. You say on Track 2, the sign would be a 20-foot monument sign?
Yes.
And would the EMD sign be within that?
Yes. And then all other signs in Track 1 would be 12-foot monument signs.
Okay, so I mean, if Sonic were to go there, their sign package would look different than what you're describing?
That is correct.
You'd come back for that?
We'll have to come back for it anyway at our site plan approval.
And the building finishes, I understand the industrial nature of what's up there, but I'd like to have Lee comment.
On the, I know that there's a lot of industry and different, really, facades, but that's further south than what we're talking about right now, which this property is a little bit further north, which is surrounded by hotels and those kinds of uses and further up. And on this facade, we're asking for, what do you recommend, 25%? Is that what was recommended in the application? And we're asking for?
You're asking for 75%, which would be brick.
And your argument is what, again, Mr. Box?
That's really inconsistent. When you see the 75% requirement, if you're dealing with virgin land, or you're dealing with a brand-new development, I'd understand it. Here, you have a wide range of uses, even north of those warehouses, that deal with everything from tilt-up concrete to metal, and all in between. And so we think, both on the east and west side, that's what you see, and we think that's consistent and appropriate.
Janice, what's the base zoning under Track 2?
And we think, there's a couple of possibilities. We've been approached by a group that would want to do an RV park, it's a possibility. More probable would be, you'd see Traveler's Place, and you'd see individual tracks where you'd have a plumber, an electrician, somebody that wanted to have a warehouse, those kinds of uses.
You're talking about Track 1?
Oh, you're talking about Track 1?
Oh, is that your discussion about Track?
I was talking about Track 1. You were talking about Track 2?
Track 1, that's not really a problem with this application. My problem is Track 2, on 122nd Street, with a 20-foot flashing sign, and 40 uses. No plan whatsoever, you can just put anything in there, including large gasoline stations.
Wait, it's a truck stop right next to it.
Well, you don't want to add insult to injury, do you? I mean--
I think there's a possibility that truck stop could expand, I think there's a possibility you could have a hotel.
Well, then, they come back, et cetera, they would already probably have a sign, and they probably do, I don't know. But to the east of you, let's go pasture. You don't need a 20-foot sign, you don't need a flashing sign, you don't need that at all. And also the uses that you have, there's no way that, Track 1, okay, 12-foot monument signs and what you, everything else, because that has no impact on anything other than warehouses, I mean, or a hotel, whatever you want to do. It's Track 2 that you're imposing all of these really significantly imposing uses, and a 20-foot flashing sign, in a place that really needs to be toned down. And if you would revise and agree to, you don't, 1, 2, 3, 4, 5 of the nine technical evaluations recommended by the staff, you're saying, no, we don't want to do any of that. That's not cooperative with the staff, and with what we are really trying to do with these projects that come in. We want to make them better. And so, again, my objections aren't to Track 1. It's an interior thing there, it's Track 2. And I think that you need to maybe revise or reconsider your refusal on the TEs, and relate those to Track 2, and come-- relate those to Track Two and come in with a less egregious and intensive, unknown development that includes everything. I mean, you've got hoop houses to kennels to drive-through, whatever there is. You can do anything you want. That's not good enough.
Can I respond to the questions you've raised?
Huh?
Can I respond to the questions you've raised?
Yeah. That's why I asked.
Is it the 20 feet or the flashing that bothers you? Okay. 20 feet?
A foot monument is reasonable.
Yeah, we have that and the rest of it. We think 20 is appropriate, and I'm sure you've driven this area, but 20 will be the smallest frontage sign in the area. With regard to the uses, when you drive this area, you will see nothing but industrial, commercial, warehouse uses in a variety of different capacities. So, to say that Track Two has too many uses, I submit to you, when you drive out there, this is I Two property. So, why wouldn't you want the uses found within the I Two district to apply? As I went through it, based on the considerations that you all discussed 60 days ago, there's not one use within the I Two, other than the ones we've eliminated, that wouldn't be appropriate sitting at that location. It is right next to a truck stop, and so...
As a question, why is this part of your SPOD?
Why is what part?
You know, why do you have that included?
Well, because when he says it's I Two property, he's saying that what they're wanting it to be. What it is right now is RA and AA and C Four.
Well, that's kind of my point.
Well, but look at what the staff says. The staff says compatibility. That's what you're talking about, right? Compatibility. We meet every element of compatibility in the plan. Why? We don't have residential right around here that's going to have any negative impact. In fact, we're next to a truck stop in C Four. So, my point is, this is a high-intensity industrial area.
On a point that Dennis just made, on the staff report, Page Two, zoning, subject site RA. And you just said that Track Two is I One or I Two?
I said it is industrial area, and that's why we're zoning it.
No, I asked you what the base zoning was of Track Two.
It'll be I Two.
What is it now? RA?
Yeah, RA.
Okay.
So, would somebody go put a five-acre track next to a truck stop?
I'm telling you, no, that's the point. What you said can happen there, only can happen when you come in with an application that complies and is respectful of what the staff wants to say. What your application is, is that I can rezone this industrial because there's some stuff next door.
No, that's not what it says at all. Go to Page 13.
Well, I'm just talking about what the base zoning is and what you want to have happen. And you said you remove certain of the zoning uses from I Two to, you know, to comply with something. Well, that's on 122nd Street. All I'm saying is, is that I think that what you've thrown in here is you've assumed that it's going to be rezoned industrial.
That is correct.
That's the assumption, you know? Well, the assumption has to be based upon at least some respect for what the planning department and the staff has recommended, you know, for a place on 122nd Street. Keep in mind, my comments are not on Track One.
Okay. I'm going to accept your premise for a minute. And the one thing you and I agree with is, the staff, we should look at what they say in regard to compatibility. And if you'll ask Ms. Hammondry, I'm guessing she's going to reflect what's in this report, and she's going to say the industrial uses we propose are compatible and in conformance with the Oklahoma City Plan. I don't know how it gets better than that.
I think the point that we're making, though, is that there are several recommendations to approve it with conditions to help improve the compatibility.
He's talking about uses. That's a different topic?
No, no, no. Signage, EMDs, you don't want to do the facade. You want to do 20 or 30%. Staff says 70%.
But we're...
There's a lot of stuff in there that improves, quote, "the compatibility."
Okay. Let's talk about uses. Are you okay with our uses?
Well, I don't know. Not with large gasoline stations.
Okay.
I may not be... I looked at... You have, I don't know, how many, 45 uses. You've got kennels. I mean, you have everything that you said, except for Five. Everything that I Two allows. Everything.
If you drive from 122nd down south to the next section line road, and you drive east side and west side, you'll see all the uses that we've put.
Okay, but...
There's no reason I start... We think it's in conformance. We think it's good.
Let's assume that the uses are, you know, I understand what you're doing, because you want to rezone this industrial instead of RA. The compatibility factor, that may be compatible, but as Aubrey said, let's make the compatibility factor better on this application. And your objections are, of what materials you're going to use on the facade? You're going to have a tin building with a few bricks on the bottom. You're going to have 20-foot flashing signs. None of that is respectful for what the staff is trying to do and improve. These applications that come in, they're changing a base zoning from agricultural one-acre tracks into a heavy industrial use to be associated with what's been happening on that part of 122nd or south of it. There's nothing east. You know, you're on the forefront of the eastern, you know, border, and why not make that eastern border better?
Well, we think when we come in with a site plan, you have the opportunity to look at our borders or landscaping.
Well, I'm telling you right now, I'm not going to vote for approval of this if you do Track Two. In the way that you've described you're going to do it, in the way you're refusing to comply with or even adhere to Five out of the nine technical evaluations.
Yeah, but you have to recognize, we're not just saying we don't care about the staff. We care about what the staff has said, but there's some inconsistencies on the TEs that we think are inappropriate. You don't very rarely see, in an industrial area, a property owner come in and off the bat in the pod agree to 12-foot signs, except for one 20-foot sign. We have facade requirements within this PUD, and with regard to uses, last time we were here, there was a push to take some uses out, and we've done that. So, with regard to our approach, we have attempted to work with staff, and we think on the buffer area on Track Two, well, you'll see that when we come back for site plan approval. But you're all the ones that vote. We just ask you to vote and let us move on. We think it's a good site, and every site has to be looked at on its own. Last site you all looked at, Mr. Johnson, where you had residential and you had all this sensitivity. Totally understand. If you've driven out here, what we're asking for is appropriate for this area.
I don't disagree with Dennis on what's going out on there, 122nd Street and that whole area. I think Track Two is more sensitive clearly than Track One, and I think you might want to consider some mitigation there. The uses, I mean, you're next to a truck stop, for heaven's sakes. That's not going to... It's RA. Nobody's going to build a house there on 122nd Street next to that. It's not going to happen. So, what we ought to do is just get a really, you know, the best possible-looking product there, just because we want the entire city to look better than it does today.
Totally agree.
So, my thought is, maybe relent a little bit on some of the mitigation factors on Track Two, and I wouldn't have a problem with it. You want suggestions?
Well, yeah. When we say mitigation factors, I mean, is it...
Well, I mean, what Aubrey said, as she evaluated the comments that the staff made...
Right.
You know, you could do something more of the facade on Track Two than you would need to do on Track One, for example, because it is fronting on a four-lane, heavily-traveled street.
Let's do this. Why don't we put this on the end of the docket? I'll get with my client. We'll see if there's some additional things we can do on Track Two, and then we'd like for you to consider it and then vote on it.
That'd be fine.
Is that fair?
Okay. We'll continue Item 10 to the heel of the docket and move on.
Move.
I just did it.
Huh?
I just did it.
Okay. Case Item 11 is C 6802, the final plat of Sarah Park, Section Two. It's located south of Southwest 29th and east of Sarah Road.
Good afternoon. David Box, 522 Call Core Drive, here on behalf of the applicant and landowner, Mr. Anthony Mirzai, who is here with me today, and also Kendall Dillon, who's the civil engineer. I do want to start by saying Mr. Mirzai has flown in from California to be here at this meeting today. What we have here is a final plat. This is a final plat that conforms to the preliminary plat. This is a project that Kendall and I have been involved with since, oh, I think, sometime in 2012. Mr. Mirzai has purchased the property. He has zoned the property. He has preliminary-platted the property, and this, I believe, is the third phase of final plats. Staff's recommendation is to continue it to May 12. We don't agree with that continuance. We believe we're entitled to a vote. We believe that being that it's a final plat that conforms to the preliminary plat, there's no need to continue it. There's nothing to be gained from a continuance. If you look at the letter submitted by the OTA, what they ask you to do is push this thing off until June 1st. Unfortunately for the OTA, that wouldn't comply with the statutes in the state of Oklahoma. As everyone knows, on this commission, there's only 30 days in which the commission can consider a final plat, and it is deemed approved. So, with all due respect to the OTA, until they step up and make some sort of offer or intend to acquire the property, my client has every right to continue to push forward with development of the property. I think the cases in the state of Oklahoma are explicitly clear on this point. I'd be happy to defer to Ms. Randall, but in fact, if you look at various legal opinions drafted over the years for questions that deal with this exact topic, the city attorney's office has consistently taken the position that developers have the right to continue development. My client owns it. The fact that the OTA has produced a map, a picture, has no relevance to this. This is a final plat. The merits of this final plat deserve to be voted on, and I believe my client is entitled to an up or down vote today. I'd like to answer any questions that anyone might have.
Commissioners, any questions?
Just one. The preliminary plat was approved four years ago.
Yes, sir.
And between four years ago, when it was approved... I have two questions. This is the first one. And today, what was the reason for the delay? Just in general, why you got a preliminary plat, and then you put it together and...
Sure. It's a great question. My client is a large-scale developer. He was building out neighborhoods that he has in the northwest portion of the city, and so, as development goes, it's now turned time to focus on this portion of his development. And so, he's just been focusing on other developments. But this is the, I believe, third final plat.
So, this was on the shelf of his activity?
A natural progression of any development. I think it's worth noting that two other final plats have already been approved by the planning commission before the OTA submitted anything. So, if you're trying to get at, is this just a play because of the OTA? The answer is no. This is the third final plat.
All right. Now, the second question. They were having a meeting, weren't they? But then, they were scared that the storm was going to mess it up, and so, that meeting was delayed. But what they have is their information that they want to present to the property owners is, as I understand from just reading in the papers, their route. This is the way it's going to go. Do you have that? Do you know exactly where they're going to go?
No, neither does the OTA. Let me tell you a story about ODOT. Back in the '70s, they had an intention of going up Portland from about Memorial all the way up to Covell. And they had a map, just like the OTA has a map, and they started to acquire property, and it's now 2016. They have just started that project. So, those maps will constantly change. They aren't construction plans. It's just an overlay on a Google Earth image. So, we've seen the map, but until there's an actual offer and construction plans and something that my client, as the owner of this land, can evaluate, I don't think it's right for the OTA to try to stall development in an entire corridor based on nothing but a pretty picture.
And here's... The question is, is that if we approve this final plat, and lo and behold, their route goes, what's the word? How many roofs are going to destroy? I mean, that's this funny way that they talk about destroying roofs.
Condemnation?
Well, then they have to do a condemnation procedure, right?
They're like... Well, they have the authority under this...
If we approve this, and then the Turnpike Authority says, "I want to go right there, right where you are."
It doesn't affect that.
Well, so they have to go around here?
No. If they sincerely have a desire to acquire this land, the Constitution and the statutes allow a couple of things. One, they need a written offer based on a written appraisal submitted to the landowner. Perhaps they do decide, "This is exactly where we want to be," and they have that appraisal done, and they have a written offer that gets submitted to my client. Perhaps it's even reasonable, and we agree. Well, then they acquire the property and they move on. The other scenario is, they come up with an offer. It's not reasonable in the eyes of my client, and my client turns them down. They have the right under the Constitution of the state of Oklahoma to file condemnation proceedings.
Well, but see, I think that's my... I don't know anything about it.
Regardless of what happens here, those rights don't change.
Well, but this is why, you know, why they want to delay this until they have this meeting in June, whatever it is. The way you're describing it, David, is that no matter what, if we approve the final plat, and they want that route to go in there, or if we don't approve it, you own the land, either way, they're going to have to deal with you, your client.
Yeah.
Is that... Am I right?
Absolutely.
Either way.
That's true, but David stated it accurately at the beginning of his presentation. There is... If there's some reason you want to deny this final plat, it cannot be because of the highway route, which is... Doesn't exist.
Well, that's true. I agree with that.
So, I mean, we're having a discussion about an issue that doesn't matter.
We believe the only issue is, does the final plat conform to the preliminary plat? There are a handful of TEs, all of which we agree to. Therefore, we believe that it conforms. Therefore, we're entitled to an approval.
Okay. Enough. I'll move approval. We have a motion and a second to approve Item 11. Cast your votes, and it's approved.
Thank you.
Item 12 is PUD 1611 to rezone 1701 Southwestern from I One, I Two, I Three, R One. PUD 1487 and SPOD 855 to PUD 1611.
David Box, 522 Call Core Drive, here on behalf of the applicant. Also with me is Blair Humphries and the rest of our team. This is a PUD that has been in the works for quite some time. I'd like to thank everybody that has taken the time to meet with us on this project, and especially staff. We had meeting after meeting with everybody, with Development Services and the Planning Department, and Jeff Hines, and Public Works, and Utilities, because this is a very important project. One might even say it's a unique project. And so, we wanted to make sure that not only do we have a PUD that this body and council would ultimately accept and approve, but allowed my client to actually be able to develop it. It is a unique project. It is one that will be very different from any other developments we've seen in this city. One of the major reasons is, we're on the river. If you followed the news or have driven by here recently, you saw this week the Ferris Wheel has started to go up on it. I believe their hope is to be open sometime in June on the Ferris Wheel. When we started, there was a couple of issues that we needed to address just for sake of allowing Blair to develop this project. The entire track right now is covered with the Scenic River overlay. So, what that would mean is, for most things, we'd have to file an application and go before the Scenic River Design Committee. Well, when you have 122nd down south to the next section line road, and you drive Well, when you have a 100-acre project, that becomes cumbersome. It makes it very difficult, if not impossible, to have any sort of momentum in your development. So what we set out to do was to come up with a framework that respected what the intent of that overlay was designed to do. That'd be to respect the public realm, being the river and Western, but also allow some flexibility within the document to allow Blair to continue to develop this. So what we came up with was a hierarchy. You see that we've broken it out into five separate tracks. You have track one, which is most on the river and Western. Generally, everything within track one will require Scenic River approval. Everything in the project above 20,000 square feet in area will require that Scenic River approval. But as you slide away from Western and the river, we incorporated more flexibility. You can see here, this document, which is in the PUD, which is table 9.3.1, you can see we go from track one to track five. Everywhere you see SR is a use that requires Scenic River approval. So you can see as we get away, we have more flexibility. This is an issue that has been debated a lot at the Scenic River Committee, and so we wanted to make sure we got it to a place that they were ultimately going to be comfortable with it. At their meeting this month, they did recommend approval unanimously of this PUD with this development hierarchy in place. The other thing that we wanted to do is to be upfront with what we anticipate having on a plat. The subdivision regulations are not designed for urban development. The subdivision regulations are designed to accommodate developments, what I keep saying, out at 150th and Rockwell. So we understand when we come with a plat, which we did file last Friday, there's going to be a host of variances that are going to be needed. And so we're working with staff as late as right before the meeting that we know between now and when it comes before the planning commission, we're going to have to work long and hard to come up with agreements. But there are going to be some variances. And the reason we're going to have to have variances is because we just don't have anything in this city right now that would allow for this type of urban development. So we think we have got it to a place where staff is comfortable, the Scenic River group is comfortable, and my client is comfortable that he can now go develop this. I'd be happy to answer any questions, but I do want Blair to be able to come up and share his dream for this site. So if there's any, not any questions of me, I'll turn it over to Blair.
Go ahead.
Thank you, David. It's really a privilege to be here today. It's been a long time for me.
Name and address, Blair, for the record.
Blair Humphries. I'm at 1222 Northwest 20th Street in the wonderful Gatewood historic neighborhood. And this is a project I've been working on very diligently for a little over two years. It's been a lengthy process just to get to this point, and we have many years ahead of us of development. I just want to remind you a little bit of the vision that's been developed over the last two years, and kind of the seeds of this project that date back over a decade. And then we'll move on and tell you a little bit more about the plat. As you can see, here's South Oklahoma City, south of I-40, and its connection into downtown on the new Maps 3 Central Park. And here are our holdings. Under contemplation as part of this plat is only the downtown airpark site west of Western Avenue. It's approximately 90 acres. The vision for this really goes back to a city plan, the 2002 Oklahoma, I call it the OKC River Corridor Strategic Action Plan, or the Oklahoma River Plan now. And this node along the river, you have the Boathouse District, which is very recreational. You have the Meridian Landing, which services, you know, limited service hotels and provides for this convention and state fair business. This was always intended to be the urban neighborhood, the mixed-use place where people could live, where they could work, and where they could play in Oklahoma City on the Oklahoma River. And this vision that they put forth that you should have this great neighborhood with a mix of uses that's pedestrian-friendly, bike-friendly, provide for a 15th street connection that provides for new accessibility that doesn't currently exist, we really used this as the blueprint for our planning efforts moving forward. Ultimately, the plan's really about real neighborhoods, neighborhoods with a mixture of uses, neighborhoods where kids can play and walk and be safe, not just in their backyards, but out in front, on the streets, and places where people can shop, not drive-through windows, but actually strolling, enjoying patio dining, and being out in the public realm. It's also about connecting to the city amenities that already exist there. Of course, you have the Oklahoma River, but along that river, you now have one of the largest recreational trail systems really in this region. It's a tremendous feature, a tremendous asset, and something that we intend to integrate and connect to as part of our plan. You know, this quote really speaks to what we're trying to do. The 20th century was really about getting around, and we saw Oklahoma City expand rapidly over the last 100 years. But as we now, over this previous decade, previous decades, and looking forward with Plan OKC and the downtown development framework on the books, it's really about investing in places that are worth staying in. So the Wheeler District vision came about. It's connected to its history there. It's connected to this shift towards bikeability and health, and it's connected to creating a great waterfront. As far as family friendliness goes, we realize you can't have a great neighborhood without a great neighborhood school. So we've been working with a group of stakeholders, both from the south side, from leadership within the Hispanic community, and from leaders sitting on the school board, to develop a plan for a new elementary school that would not just serve Wheeler District, but would address the overcrowding issues on the south side and serve some of the surrounding neighborhood as well. It's our hope that that school would be a dual immersion school, so it'd actually teach courses in both Spanish and English, blending students that come from a Hispanic-dominated background as well as an English-dominated background. As far as the housing goes, there's a range of housing types, everything from courtyard bungalows, and I'll show you a little bit more here in just a bit. The planning process started at Grill on the Hill. Throughout the course of one week, we had a publicly open charrette, had over 1,000 people attend. It was ran by Dover Coal Partners out of Coral Gables, Florida. And you can see we had a cross-section of the community that showed up and really helped. We had 28 tables present out as to their ideas for what should happen in Wheeler District. To give you a sense, when we polled people and asked them, "We know you love Oklahoma City, but if you didn't live here, where would you live?" These are the five cities that won. So this is not, this is not your Dallas-bound or Houston-bound generation. It's a generation and a target market that wants an urban experience, that loves what's going on in downtown, midtown, in the Plaza District, and uptown, and wants to see more of that. And so what Plaza District and what uptown and what midtown has become for the north half of the city, Wheeler District very much looks to be for the south half of the city. It's a complement to Coors Ashore and a connection back into the neighborhood south of the river. After one week of working with engineers, we had civil engineers, transportation engineers, floodplain engineers, urban designers, architects, we threw everything we had at it over the course of seven days and came up with the master plan and presented it back out to the community. And it's really the plan you see before you today. We do contemplate that we'll have future development east of Western Avenue. It's currently under a different floodplain scenario that will require mitigation before it's ready for development. So we expect to be before you in the coming years with plans for that. But for now, we're focused west of Western Avenue. And you can see the plan as it sits, reimagining the runway as a tree-lined avenue, keeping the old terminal building and the old Hangar 5 building on the southeast end, so that those could be repurposed as historical assets within the community, and then providing a real blend of housing types, apartments, townhomes, single-family homes with entertainment and retail. As mentioned, the Ferris Wheel is up, and we continue to work on providing kind of a early, early vision for what that Ferris Wheel Plaza can be, knowing full well that it really won't get the full experience until it's built up and developed on its edges to make that Ferris Wheel part of the, part of the south bank and part of the city. A range of public spaces, small and large, and then housing that's suitable. It's a little bit different from this market, but drawing on some of our experience at Carlton Landing and other master plan communities, we're pulling in architecture that we think celebrates the history of Oklahoma, celebrates the vernacular, but then is brought together in a way that's appropriate in this urban site. As far as the ongoing process goes, we've always known this was going to take time, but we want to, we want to create a place, develop a place over the next 10 and 15 years that'll be a place that lasts for generations in Oklahoma City. We're going to start on the southern end of the site, surrounding that terminal building, and work our way north. Of course, you'll have the Ferris Wheel on the river. This is, this is kind of where we see the Ferris Wheel is being headed in terms of development. We're, we're on our way. Eventually, we'd love it to look more like this type of urban condition, but you can see it going up there and see, it's under construction, but coming in June, we'll have it, have that Plaza fully completed. So if we're able to play, the light show will be going in the next few weeks, and I think it'll, there'll certainly be a sign of good things to come on the Oklahoma River. It'll be an exciting day in Oklahoma City. Thank you.
There are two TEs that we agree with. So again, you know, we've worked with staff. You're going to see the plat real soon, and between now and then, we'll continue to work with staff and hope to see you next month. Be happy to answer any questions.
Well, I think it's exciting to see something this deeply thought through and for the community input that's been drawn upon, not to mention the experts from around the country who have done some of these things in different communities. But having grown up in a large city on the East Coast, I mean, this is getting a lot closer to what I remember as a child, so, and we seem to be going back to that across the country now. So really looking forward to this.
I'll just say, you know, I think the city planted the seed as to what should happen there, and then collectively, we're working together to figure out how that happens. And it certainly has been some challenges. Planning Department, Development Services, Public Works have all been terrific to work with. And so as we sit down with Public Works and sit down with Utilities Department moving forward, we have a good game plan in place and think we'll be able to work through those issues. The documents that have come out downtown, particularly the downtown development framework, those are wonderful documents. And so I hope that, that future regulations in the city continue to build upon the great work that's been done recently.
I think we'll be happy to approve pages of variances if we need to in order to make this happen.
I just want to say something about that, too. In working with Blair and his team on this project, there are a lot of standards that the city has that we've been talking about over the years need to be modified. And we have realized there are several places in our codes that we'd like to improve. We are going to be retaining a consultant within the next year to start the process of looking at those amendments to the code. This project, however, has been taking all the direction from all the plans that we've set in place. It's actually one of the first projects that's taking our recommendations for code changes and specifying them in this specific, in this planned unit development. So it'll be one of the first ones out the door that really demonstrates what it is we're trying to achieve with other types of mixed-use development. And we're really proud of the work you've done on it.
And also, I won't require a TE that you won't use EMD signs. You're welcome. Because you've got the mother load of EMD signs on your, you know, it's really a side project.
Totally 90-foot tall. Is that bigger than typical?
You heard it here first. No one has signed that.
I'm in approval.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve item 12. Cast your votes, and it's approved. Thank you.
Item 13 was continued. Item 14 is SPUD 889 to rezone 7800 Northwest 89th Street from PUD 847 to SPUD 889.
Good afternoon. Dean Colita, KBGE Engineering, representing developer Neil McGee Holmes. This is for the Lofts of Commerce Park. We, on this spud here, a little overview kind of the project, obviously it's located Northwest 89th near Council, Northwest Expressway. It's just south of the major retail there. And, you know, currently, the owner, the developer owns 10 lots within the Commerce Park Development, and there's 18 total lots currently. He's built two office buildings and is currently building a third. There's four other office buildings that are currently occupied, but the development's kind of been a little bit slow for development right now. So to accommodate the proposed development, which is a townhome project for sale, 29 units with amenities, and we plan to replat four lots within the Commerce Park Development, section one of that plat. And, you know, the development includes amenities such as walking trails, landscaping, water feature, gazebos, recreational areas, you know, bike racks, and some additional parking. And it will be controlled by an HOA. So there'll be some control over the shape of the project and, you know, how it's maintained. The zoning, obviously, current zoning base district is C-3. We are trying to get this to be in our 4 to 5th is townhome regime. So the, in regards to the comprehensive plan, you know, I believe this meets that comprehensive plan, and you can see in the staff report, I believe that they've highlighted some issues in there as well that it does meet that plan. For one, it does integrate the land uses. It provides connectivity between and with, within the individual developments that surround it. The, you know, it does facilitate pedestrian and bicycle traffic, is close to all the retail, live, work, play, kind of makes a mixed-use urban environment there. And it's close to transit, which is, you know, I think it's at Northwest Expressway and Council. In addition, the density is 10.36 dwelling units an acre, which is far less than your typical multifamily, excuse me, multifamily development, which is around 15 to 30. So I think we're, you know, a little into that. And another benefit of the project is common area. More than half of the development is common area. Of the 2.88 acres, we have 1.47 acres of common area. And there's going to be amenities, walking trails, water feature, and stuff within that. And there is no compatibility issues with the medium-density residential near the office or commercial. The transportation system, there's adequate transportation around multiple routes to get to Council, Northwest Expressway, and to Willshire. These are collector streets. There's capacity. They were built and created for more intense uses, so the traffic is going to be actually decreased by this. Because with 29 units and, you know, obviously, the traffic as well is going to be reduced because, you know, as the office, it's traffic during the day, you know, these people are going to be out working, you know, that's going to offset. You know, they're going to come home and the office and business traffic is pretty much gone for the day. So it's going to reduce the traffic load there as well. And in regards to the property owners, we have met with the protesters on Tuesday and tried to, you know, basically just explain a little bit more about the project and get them kind of more on page of what we're doing and a little bit more detail of the project. And they did have some concerns that we tried to address. And the main concern was, you know, they thought it was going to be apartments. Well, this isn't apartments. This isn't your high-density apartment complex. This is a townhome product that people can have a homeownership without the yard maintenance. They're going to have a small backyard, they have their own lot, two-car garage, driveway, trash service, yard or city services, more of an urban environment. So I think it's a good fit for the area. And, you know, they also have an HOA to make sure that everything is, you know, maintained properly and upcap. And this is the higher-end product. This isn't a low-end deal. This is going to be a little bit of a higher-end luxury product. In addition, the concerns were that this would negatively impact the character of the project, of the property, the whole Commerce Park area. You know, I think that's a little bit short-sighted in the fact that this is going to actually help the value. And, you know, this development hasn't been growing that much, so maybe create some momentum to it. And aesthetically, from, which is probably a major concern, you can see that currently, there's our project in red here, the protesters own these office buildings here that are occupied. Their current view is the loading dock of Kohl's, the loading dock of Walmart, and the loading dock of Sam's. With this product, you're going to have a nice visual transition, a more aesthetic appealing, you know, product between that. It almost acts as a buffer and a screening to them. So I would think they would want that in, you know, better than having to look at back at large box retail. So I think that the aesthetics is going to actually help the project and the development, nonetheless, you know, deter from it. So, you know, in addition, they had concerns that C-3 zoning did not allow residential uses. But as you're well aware, the C-3 allows dwelling units and mixed use and also senior independent living. Well, we're not doing the mixed use, but we, you know, it is allowed technically. And then also, they were worried about the traffic impacts. You know, as I said before, it's less intense, you're going to actually reduce the traffic. So I believe that, you know, that concern is, you know, it shouldn't be valid. The benefits of the project, you know, this is an alternative product that's in many cities around, you know, the, where everyone wants to live, Austin, Dallas. I mean, OKC's getting there. It's going to grow as more people come in, they're going to look for that. They've come from an urban environment, they come to Oklahoma City, they need this product. They want it, they're looking for that. You know, to deny that would be kind of short-sighted, I believe. And, you know, this is an urban area, you know, it may be spread out a little bit, but I think it's a good fit for this area. It gives someone an alternative to have a homeownership without having the maintenance of a regular, single-family house. So, and, you know, they're close to all the retail. They could walk, they could bike, you know, it creates that mixed-use environment. It helps this thrive, you know, there's a business owners here, one of the ladies is a chiropractor. Well, she may have 29 customers now, you know? I think everyone will feed off of this, and it'll actually help the development instead of deter from the development. So, and, you know, this is a good fit. And there's similar developments like this, that one point was it's... One point was this should be in an urban, you know, like a midtown. Well, of course that, but, you know, this fits here as well. Edmund has these, you know, 164th, just south of 164th off of Western, this exact product's going in there. There's empty development, you know, there's undeveloped land all around it. So you can say that that fits, and that's in Oklahoma City. And then Edmund North, I guess off threats in 178th Edmund Road, just south of there, the same product is there. So it fits, and people are starting to go towards this development in this style of product for homes. You know, your millennials come in and all your young professionals that have kids, they need this type of product. They like this, you know, they kind of gravitate towards that. So it's a good alternative. I think that's, you know, it's going to be quality development, amenity-rich, it's going to look good, it's going to look nice, it's going to help the property value, and it's going to, you know, essentially increase the city's tax base. So, you know, with that, we do accept all the TEs that are on the list, and we respectfully request your approval.
Thank you. Any questions to the applicant before we hear from protesters? Give somebody else the podium for a few minutes. Kelly Work?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman and members of the Commission. My name is Kelly Work, and I am here on behalf of my clients, the Samples Group LLC, Commerce Park Holdings LLC, and Bank On It. And we are opposing this rezoning to this S.P.U.D. 889. The, there are a number of other persons, I believe, who are present, and I just would like to ask them to show their hands, persons who are here and opposing this application. And I think some of those may also want to speak with you this afternoon. The, if I could, Ms. Lakin, ask you to put up the area plan or the site plan that goes with the staff report. The, I just want to identify for you the properties. The S.P.U.D. that is, that is proposed there is included within the existing P.U.D. 847. And the 847 is that area within that loop that is between those four streets, 85th Terrace, Commerce Park Drive, Silver Hill Drive, and Northwest 89th Street. And the, that P.U.D. 847 was approved in 2002. And what it contemplated, contemplated was a business office park. The underlying zoning that was included as a part of the P.U.D. is C3. But the master development plan laid out, and I'll ask Ms. Lakin to put that up in just a moment, laid out a 18 lots that would be developed as a business office park. And that is, that master plan, plan map that accompanied the, I think that's actually the final plan. There's a copy of the master plan map that, you know, that's actually the final plan. Ms. Lakin, if you could go to the exhibit A. So there is the master plan map that was approved with the P.U.D. 847 in 2002, and it shows the 18 separate lots. It was contemplating individually-owned office buildings. And then if you could, Ms. Lakin, go to exhibit B. Then this is a copy of the final plat that was recorded that is consistent with the master plan map for P.U.D. 847. It shows eight individual lots with a common area that is a pond there in the center of the development. And then if you could move to exhibit C. And then consistent with that final plat and the master development plan map, then there was a set of recorded restrictive covenants that were, that were recorded with the Oklahoma County Clerk that restrict the use of every lot within this Commerce Park addition to business office buildings. And I've highlighted the language there of the recorded restriction. Of course, that would apply to the property that is included within this rezoning application as well. And we understand that those are private restrictive covenants that are for the benefit of all of the owners of property within the addition. But nevertheless, I wanted to bring it to your attention because it's consistent with the master development plan for P.U.D. 847, and it's consistent with the final plat that was recorded in 2002 after the P.U.D. was approved. And then the, if you could, Ms. Lakin, just put up the area map that accompanies the staff report. I wanted to just point out the properties that my clients own and occupy. There, as you look along Northwest 85th Terrace, it shows the existing office buildings within this Commerce Park office addition. The three buildings that are along that southernmost edge are occupied by Bank On It, which is a data management company that provides data management services specifically tailored for the banking business. The Bank On It is the tenant and the owner of those properties are the two LLCs that I mentioned that I represent. They have those three buildings on four lots, and then they own an additional two lots there to the west. So my clients own six of the 18 lots and are using it for the business office park purposes. There is the two office buildings then that are to the north there along Commerce Park Drive are also individually-owned office buildings, and those two owners are here in attendance in opposition to the rezoning request as well. The applicant's representative made reference to some other buildings. There are two shells of office buildings that have been constructed just at the west end on that lot that is west of the subject property, and those are not yet occupied. They just, they're available for sale or lease. And then there is another building that is on the lot just to the south of that that is under construction by this applicant that we understand from our meeting is being constructed for the Oklahoma Wheat Commission. It's a build-to-suit, so the Wheat Commission will be buying that and making that their home. So the, the office park plan is still very much vibrant and vital and is functioning well. The, this proposed multifamily residential rezoning would be a significant departure from the business office park plan that my clients and the other owners within the addition have based their significant investments on. So they have relied on the existing P.U.D., on the existing plat, on the existing restrictive covenants to make their investments. In our view, this proposed multifamily residential would be incompatible with the office park environment that has been established out there. There's a lot of green space that was planned with these individual office buildings. There is the pond feature that is designed to be an amenity to serve the office park development. And this would be a pretty radical shift from what we understood the plan was to be and what we have made the investment based on. If the, this change were to occur to allow multifamily residential, our concern is, is that it will interfere with the build-out of the balance of the office park consistent with what was originally planned, and that it may, in fact, open the door to have other lots that this applicant owns then be changed to allow for additional multifamily development. As you may have noticed on the, on the proposed plans for the townhome that the applicant was referring to, the southern edge there of those units where those individual townhomes are proposed to be located, those, their garages would actually back up to that street that is existing there that serves the office park development. So, so he was suggesting that he would be improving the view that we presently have, which is right now just of the pond and the open space that surrounds the pond. If this proposed townhome development were to be put in place, we'd then be looking at just the garages for that section of the townhomes. And then they would be oriented, the fronts would be oriented towards the center of the We would ask that you support the continued vitality of this office park development. And Mr. Groves is here and is going to speak to some of the other business owners that are just outside of this P.U.D. 847 property. But there is a very successful business office character for this area that has been established there south of the commercial retail along Northwest Expressway and Council. And it, I think, deserves continued support from the Commission and from the city in order to allow it to continue to be successful. I know there's probably a few other people that would like to speak. I'd like to, at this time, call on Ryan Samples, who is the co-founder and president and CEO of Bank On It, which occupies the three buildings that my client owns, and ask him to just briefly make some remarks. Thank you.
Give us your name and address, please.
Absolutely. It's Ryan Samples, 8601 Commerce Park Drive, Oklahoma City.
Thank you.
So, as Kelly mentioned, my company, Bank On It, occupies three of these five existing buildings in this P.U.D. A little history on why we're so passionate about leaving the character the same, the same as it always has been. We purchased the first building, which is the one to the, in the southeast corner, in January of 2006, and I actually personally office there and have since that time. At that time, we had seven employees. And as Kelly mentioned, we provide technology services to community banks. So a big part of that is them having confidence in our stability and our ability to be in existence. Since that time, we've constructed the other two buildings you see on the road there and grown to employ about 100 people at this site. As part of that growth, what's contributed to the success has been we actually bring people to Oklahoma City from the 11 states that we do business in and ask them to come take a tour and look around and, and see what we do. And so just in the last 12 months, for example, we've had 221 visitors visit this site, 196 of those were from outside of the state of Oklahoma. We think that, we think that having our facility in a well-maintained, well-managed business park is a key part of our success, and that's why we chose to locate there in 2006 when the existing P.U.D. was put in place, and it's why we continue to invest in that area. We have other facilities in Tulsa, Oklahoma, and Lenexa, Kansas, but we choose to bring our people to Oklahoma City to look at, look at our stuff here. So we have some serious concerns that by changing the character of this, it makes it far less attractive for us to continue our expansion plans of, of building more buildings in this area. And we also think that it's short-sighted on the part of the folks wanting to do it. It's, this business park is 100% owner-occupied and very, very well-maintained, and there's no reason to change that. Appreciate your time.
Thank you. Mr. Groves?
Mr. Chairman, members of the Commission, good afternoon. I'm going to try to avoid repeating a lot of the things that Kelly Work said, but I do want to be sure that we've covered everything that needs to be covered. By the way, I represent Ken McGee and his entities. We have a representative from those organizations here today, Susan Bible, who can answer any technical questions you might have. Like Ryan, my client is heavily invested in this area. If you look on the, across the street on Northwest 85th Terrace, immediately south of P.U.D. 847, there are three buildings. The one immediately south is ours, and it is occupied by the Hartford Call Center. A lot of employees. To the east of that is our office building occupied by Williams Sonoma Call Center. And then to the east of that is the Sprint organization. We do have one tract of vacant land, which is that long slice that runs up to Northwest 85th Terrace. My client owns that with another and has a view to developing that for offices. So even though we're across the street from Commerce Park, we are very heavily invested in the office atmosphere that exists, and we would like to see it continue. Just to be sure we've got everything straight, my colleague Dennis, who was here earlier, did P.U.D. 847 back in 2002. Somehow, the underlying zoning came out to C4, but it never worked out that way, C3 rather, never worked out that way. It was really intended to be an office park. If you were to look at the staff report, incidentally, I gave everyone a notebook, not so that you'd have to read it, but that if you want to verify something, there's a document in there to verify it. The, the original P.U.D. is at exhibit one, design statement. The original plat is at exhibit three. And as you'll notice, and as Kelly pointed out, all those lots on the plat are designed for individual office buildings. The staff report, which is exhibit two at page five, said these are small lots intended for office development. That's what the staff said in its report. And then, of course, there are the covenants, which we don't ask you to enforce, but they are evidence of intent of how this area was to be developed. And they are exhibit four in your notebooks at page three, article four, section one. The buildings are restricted to offices. There are other more recent documents in your notebook should you want to look at them. The design statement for the proposed spud is exhibit five. It seeks underlying R4, which, of course, is the most intense multifamily district there is, ordinarily apartments. Now, we had the opportunity to meet with Mr. McGee the other day. Mr. McGee acquired this land from a bank. He told us he assumed the construction loans on the land. That's how he got it. And he bought other land in the park. And the last exhibit in your notebook is the county assessor history of how the land was acquired. So he bought it for offices, and he built offices. In fact, we had our meeting in an unfinished office building on Tuesday. So we asked Mr. McGee, well, you bought in an office park, you're building offices. He has a big sign up out front that says, "Really nice offices, $375 a pop." So what's up with this? And he says, "Well, the office market's soft, let's face it." Well, it is. He's right. And he's got to do something with that land, and there's more demand for housing than there is for offices. So in terms of the market, that's why he made the decision. And he said, "Well, how are you going to do this? Are you going to sell these and fee simple? You're going to make them condominiums? Are you going to rent them?" He says, "Well, they're going to be townhomes. So we're going to sell them." He says, "But it's possible that one individual might buy them all, or maybe a group of individuals, some doctors I work with, might buy them all." Well, I think you all know what that is code for. That means I'm going to sell them, but somebody's going to rent them. And these are built to be rented. You know, he wants $200,000 apiece for these things. I don't believe he's going to be able to get that in this location at this time. And we also talked to him about basic compatibility issues, and we said, "Look, Mr. McGee, this kind of thing might work in the Plaza District." In fact, it is working in the Plaza District. Might work in the Cottage District, might work in Bricktown, Deep Deuce, Uptown, Midtown, but this is the suburbs. And this is an inappropriate kind of insertion into an established area. It just doesn't fit. It just doesn't work. It's disruptive, and it disrespects the investment that all of these other folks have made. So I think you can... So I think you can see what it's all about. By the way, we looked at these plans, and one copy that were given to us had a different address on it, Main Street in Norman. So we looked into that, and as it turns out, these are off-the-shelf plans that you can buy if you want them from this fellow, Jay Holman, with offices at 2800 Coltrane Place in Edmund. And as it turns out, some people did buy these plans, ready-to-go plans, and built this exact same design, 48th and Main in Norman. My associate went down, looked at it, said, "It didn't look too bad from the outside, from the front, but if you go around the back, it's all made out of tin." It was also tried in Edmund, on Edmund Road. So this is a desperation measure. With all due respect to Mr. McGee, we understand the market, but he bought into an office park, and we think he should respect what he invested in. Now, a few things about the comp plan. I don't want to go into it in great detail, but it's a new plan. We're all learning to work with it. And there are some key things. I disagree with the staff's conclusion about, you know, that it could be compatible. I don't think it is. In the new plan, it's emphasized at the beginning, the central focus of the plan is to guide how various land uses can be integrated and still be compatible. So the comprehensive plan is a guide, of course, it's not law. And it does try to do that, to encourage a mixture of uses that work in harmony with each other. So we have to say that, yes, mixed uses are a good idea if they work in harmony, and if they're in the right place at the right time. The plan also recognizes that all land uses are not inherently compatible. The plan has a goal of striving to make what might be incompatible compatible, and that is certainly a laudable goal. But there are some things where it just can't be done, and this is one of them. Now, a few things about mixed uses. I happen to have had the experience of growing up in a city of mixed uses. So did Mr. Yoko. I grew up in Philadelphia and grew up in an inner-city neighborhood where uses were mixed, and I learned a lot about them then and since. Mixed uses come to be out of necessity, out of business necessity, out of convenience, out of a lack of automobiles, where people use public transit. They are necessary things. It's like Jane Jacobs, in her great book on cities, pointed out, cities are organic. They grow like flowers to meet the needs of the people who live there. And that's true of all the great cities. So mixed uses are fine if they grow up in order to meet the needs of the people in that area, but I don't think you can take the theory of mixed uses and just impose it on a place where it doesn't work. We must be cautious when we start talking about mixed uses. Some places it works, some places it doesn't. The increasingly dense central core in Oklahoma City is a good place for projects like this, but not the suburbs. There may be exceptions to that, of course, but you can see how attempting to impose a mixed-use doctrine on this garden park or office park would just not work out. I think Mr. McGee needs to resign himself. He's going to have to build offices there, which he's presently doing, and stay with the plan. We really appreciate your time on this. I know this is a lot of aspects to it, but we're available to answer any questions you might have. And, of course, we have a representative, Mr. McGee, here to answer any technical questions you might have about his investment in the area. We thank you very much for your time and attention.
We have two more people signed up. Michelle Cable, if I've got that correct. If you would give us your name and address, please.
Yes, Michelle Cobal, 8801 Commerce Park Drive. And if you're looking at the map there on Commerce Park Drive, I'm actually the middle building. And I represent White Tornado Holdings, which we own the building. I'm the manager of that building. I'm also the main occupant of that building. And I have a 401K retirement practice, and so myself and my employees are also housed in that office. We purchased that building less than two years ago with the understanding that this was commercial property and how the development was going to be able to continue. We renovated that building to not only occupy ourselves, but also have one other leased tenant in that building. And I would just have to say that I totally disagree with the idea of thinking that this may decrease the automobile access that was discussed there in the beginning, because we all, even though you see all the main public streets, the streets that are within and around that pond and that come in and out of that development are actually maintained by the owners, and they do still require public access. The concern about that is, is that if you look at the development, and we're talking a possible of roughly 50 different parking spots, and they don't have any access to the Northwest 89th Street, then what that means is, is that's going to increase all of the automobile access in and around all of our buildings and that pond area. So I, you know, very much oppose the fact that, first of all, again, the reason we just purchased there less than two years ago with the understanding that it was going to be for office development. And then if you look at the different types of offices that are not only there but continue to be drawn to that area, what you'll see is that it's not like walk-in traffic. Instead, it's mainly employee base for places and for people to work, and maybe individual, you know, client-type meetings, or as Ryan was mentioning, you know, any visitors that want to come see the complex, et cetera. We already have a lot of drive-through traffic from the call centers that are located on Northwest 85th Street if they're trying to cut through and not use Commerce Park or not use Silver Hill Drive. And so I would just say that the, not only the aesthetics that we've been discussing, but also the traffic increase would be substantial for us to maintain in and around our parking areas. Thank you.
Thank you. Christian Brim?
Hi. I'm Christian Brim. I'm at 8901 Commerce Park. I'm the northernmost building there. Thank you. I've never spoke for the city before, so it's interesting. I'm the old man out there. I've watched two developers, Tap and Banta, both try this, and I can understand the position that the developers in, because I've seen it. But quite frankly, the time to rezone this would have been 10 years ago. It actually has picked up since I've been there. We've been there approximately 10 years. Mr. Samples has built out and I know will continue to build. And when we bought it, we assumed that it was going to be restricted to commercial use. The thought that that's going to improve my property value doesn't make sense from what I know, because when I get an appraisal, it's based upon comps, and there's nothing comparable about a townhouse to my property value. If anything, it decreases my value, because there's not more lots that Ryan can build on, quite frankly. My other major concern is, is being right there at that exit, is I'm going to have 100 new transient tenants and their guests using my parking lot for overflow parking. We are a CPA firm that occupy that building. We've got thousands of clients, very sensitive data, and I don't want the risk of having someone break into my office and compromise that data. It's a huge pain with the IRS and everybody else. So it would be an undue burden to have to mess with that. I appreciate your time. I hope you vote no.
Thank you. Mr. Kalida?
I'm Neil McGee, applicant, Neil McGee Homes.
Your address?
3006 Oakwood Drive in Edmunds, my physical home address. Just wanted to mention a few things. One, I made a large investment in this area. I'm certainly not trying to do anything that would degrade the value. I still own five additional lots plus two office buildings right next to this development. My lots that I own are actually the ones that are closest to this development. What I'm doing is certainly not an act of desperation. I'm not putting $5.8 million into development as an act of desperation. This plan was brought to me, and the seed was planted from somebody, and it made sense to me. If you look at the success of Bricktown, Midtown, Uptown, and Plaza, when you started injecting housing into that area, the prices went, you know, I think some of that property value is probably $2 a foot, and it's at 30 a foot now. So dramatically, by making the proper investment of housing in that area, it has increased the values. So I also want to point out that the street that we are actually putting the garages on to the south was put in by the bank that I bought the property from. They actually paid the cost of putting that street in to help the lots that I purchased. So that street was paid for, basically, in the process of my property. So I really think it's a very good blend for this area. We have a lot of people that work in these office parks back there. Now, we're offering the opportunity to bike to work, walk to work. Housing like this also supports the retail, the restaurants around it, and it brings what a lot of the big-city people that come to visit him at his business are probably used to. I don't think this would be a shock to them to see a tract of housing in an area that's close to work and shopping and restaurants. I think most of the people I have spoken with thought this was a great idea and a great opportunity to not, people don't have to live downtown Oklahoma City to be able to have this same opportunity to walk and bike to work and shop. So I really think the staff did a good review on this and found it to be compatible, and we'd like to ask for your approval. Thank you.
Commissioners, discussion?
I'd like to ask either Eric or Kelly a question about some of this, the declaration that was filed that restricts this to commercial offices. Is that, has that been amended or deleted? Or was it ever available to persons who bought this property, like the young woman that two years ago got this?
Oh, yes. It was filed of record back in 2002. Everything was done together, Commissioner. The zoning that Dennis did, the plat, and the covenants were all done in the same approximate timeframe. There's a copy of them in your notebooks, and I highlighted the section that restricts the land to offices. They have not been amended. That is still in force.
But it's still on file, still valid, and has not been amended by the majority of the property interest owners?
No. We discussed that a little bit with Mr. McGee the other day, and I think he may have succeeded his declarant. He owns, I think, 50% or slightly better. And he mentioned, "Well, you know, I can amend those, you know, laterally, if I want to."
Well, and then it's...
And he might be able to, by the way.
Another question, the people that bought property would have had access to what this declaration says. That's a representation.
Sure.
Is there an issue about misrepresentation of what they bought?
No.
Is that even a factor in this whole thing?
No, it's not a factor.
Because this can be amended by a majority of the property owners, and that'd be...
At some point, at some point, when they, when the others own 50%, yes, they want to.
But it hasn't been today.
No, never been changed, still in force. Mike?
Yeah, thanks. I'm well-familiar with this area. Obviously, it's in my ward. And the area to the, both to the, back to the east as well as to the north, this area has, I think, gained traction over the last few years as a commercial office park. I just don't believe, looking at this, that this is a proper land use. And it's, I don't, I do respect to the staff. I don't agree with their analysis with respect to this particular tract and this particular location. You know, this is, I agree, it would work maybe in Midtown, other parts of the city, but not in this part. And I'm just setting aside, again, the restrictive covenants, because that's not, that's not my concern. That's not our concern. But just looking at it purely from a land use and what's around here and how this is developing, I just don't, I just don't, I don't think it works. And I can't support the application based on all the, all the things that the protesters have said, and again, based on my own experience with the area. I think it's, to interject residential here, I think, is also, I don't like necessarily taking, looking at the slippery slope or that argument, but to interject that style of residential in this particular area, I think, is also a mistake, because, again, it's developing as an office park. If you go back to the east of this, a lot of these areas here are light industrial, et cetera, so I just don't think that this is a compatible place for residential. And so I can't, personally, I can't support the application.
Well, when I think of mixed use, I think of live-work-play areas where you really have access to amenities that maybe you can walk to or bike to. But thinking about families living in here and bicycling into the Walmart parking lot or the Target parking lot, or in and around all these industrial structures, is not part of what I think of as a live-work-play mixed-use environment. Where it has been succeeding, as has been pointed out, is in some of the older areas of the city where we have infrastructure. We have the grid street system, for example. You're close to restaurants and downtown where you can get to work, and you're near parks. And this is not that kind of environment, and it's not going to become that kind of And so I agree with Mike respectfully. I disagree with the staff report. I don't think that's at all what I think of when I think of mixed-use projects. And certainly, if I was wanting to live in a mixed-use project, I wouldn't choose this.
No, and I think, as you look at, back to the south and to Eric's clients, Sprint, Hartford, Williams-Sonoma, I mean, this is, if anything, in my view, this area is developing is that, that style of occupant. And those are fairly robust, large-scale operations there. I mean, personally, I'd like to see them move. I'd like the opportunity to get more of that traffic versus less. And I think if we start, if we interject this into this particular part, it's not a good trend, and it's not appropriate for this particular area. So I'll move to deny.
Second? We have a motion, second to deny item 14. Cast your votes. It is denied. Oh, no, it's not. One more vote. It is denied.
All right, item 15, then?
Item 15 is the accompanying preliminary plat for the same site.
Not yet. I'll...
...plat for it, so if that's denied, there's no...
Do we need to vote on it, Susan?
Janice wasn't in the room.
I'll make a motion to deny 15 also.
Okay.
I just didn't get the vote on that, because there were six people here.
Anybody miss a vote? One, two, three, and...
Hensley? Oh, here, I'm voting, yeah.
Okay. It was six to zero.
Okay. And then we'll deny the plat, motion to deny 15.
Okay, we have a motion, second to deny item 15. Cast your votes. It's denied.
Thank you.
And we are back to item 10 for PUD 1602.
Dennis, you're casual now.
I am.
Is it warm in here?
It's hot. The good news is, my client is much more reasonable than his lawyer. On track two, with regard to TE number six, we would agree to the facade regulation, and we would agree to lower the height of the sign...
and we would agree to lower the height of the sign to 15 feet.
15?
15, yes. No, no, it was 20 before. But if you want to give us 50, we would... You okay taking EMD out? Yes, we'll take it out.
So we're going to get 70% EPIS or whatever.
Brick and air rock.
Brick and air rock, stone, masonry on the, on Track 2, which will be the facing. And I think we all agree that Track 1 is less important, given the fact that it can't be seen.
Right.
It has no access. It's not visible to the outside.
So to be clear, TE 3 is, what did you say, two 12-foot signs, or was there a number limit?
No, we, in the entire pad, they're all 12-foot signs.
A 115-foot sign now?
Yeah, we're going to lower that to 15 on Track 2.
Number 8 stays in now. TE 8 remains now. Is that what you just said?
Yes.
Yes, we will not put in EMD.
Okay, and as to number 5, you'll leave the trees until we see, until you come back?
Yeah, what we do agree to is to leave the existing trees until we come back with a side plane.
My only concern is, once you take them down, you can't put them back if you want them, so...
Right.
Takes a long time, anyway. Okay, were we all clear now on...
Yes.
Move for adoption?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve Item 10 as conditioned and as we just described. Cast your votes. And you're approved.
Thank you all very much.
Thank you for working with us.
And Item 17 is a resolution of the Planning Commission to amend bylaws to change adopting minutes to receiving minutes.
We have a motion and a second to approve Item 17. Cast your votes. That's approved. Oh, Dennis? Dennis? A parting comment. Your son actually did have a unique case today. I just want you to know that.
We find one every once in a while, but we like to talk about them all the time.
Yeah, I know.
The rest of the cases have been continued or withdrawn.
Planning Commission members, any discussion, any items?
I've got a question about the status of ABC overlay that we discussed at study session. You know, we had on the consent docket, one of the ABC overlays, and a fellow came in my office to discuss a project that he's going to be doing, which has an ABC 3 overlay. What's the status of that? Are we working on it, or is it...
Yes, the ordinance amendment draft has been under review. We're working with the municipal councillor's office on the wording of that draft, so as soon as that's ready to move forward, we're going to schedule the urban development committee to review it, then it will come to Planning Commission and then City Council. So I think the soonest it could move forward would be the next, by three months from now, before it would be effective.
Good. Janice?
I went to the Board of Adjustment and Planning Commission workshop thing out at Rose State, and learned some interesting things from it. But one of them was that the city of Edmunds solved their variance problem with signage by removing signs from the zoning code. So they had a system like ours where requests for variance to the sign code went to the Board of Adjustment, and after they had granted about half a dozen of them, he said, "City Council decided to amend the municipal code, take signs out of the zoning code." And now if you want a different kind of sign than the code requires, you'd have to seek approval from the City Council directly. And he said, oddly enough, they have almost none, no requests, so. I thought that was kind of a unique solution and one that we might actually consider.
Pat, what do you think the City Council would do if they had to deal with signs?
Well, but the point was, they don't, they don't really do it. They don't deal with them. They, you know, were willing to hold that line and... I'm sorry? If you, if you want to erect a sign that's in keeping with the code, you just go get your permission.
Well, you said they took out of the code.
Well, they still have, you know, not a zoning code, but you can still have codes.
The sign code.
So you go to the City Council there, I guess, if you want to do something that varies from the sign code?
And I'll tell you, too, when we do go through all of our recommendations from Plan OKC to look at sections of the code, the sign code is one of the sections that had a lot of comments as we went through the public process about. So we will be exploring different methods with consultants who've worked in a lot of cities across the United States. Hopefully, they'll have that type of experience and can talk us through maybe some different ways of doing things. That might be one way they've seen work, and there might be some other things they've seen work as well. So it'll be under review in the next year or so.
I'd like to go on record as thanking Eric Groves for this very nice three-ring binder with the tabs in it, because I can always use a good one. Planning Department, Development Services, Municipal Councillor. Motion to adjourn. We are done at 3:28.